Before we begin, I want to go over the guidelines for our public hearings here in Williamsburg County. The purpose of the public hearing is to obtain comments from the public regarding specific subject matter listed on the agenda. Citizens who plan to speak are requested to sign in as they arrive prior to the public hearing. The floor will be opened by the chairman, who will ask each speaker to provide his or her name, mailing address, including street, city, state, and zip code. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, three minutes, unless additional time is granted by the chairman. Those in attendance are asked to refrain from disrupting the meeting with noise of any kind such as clapping. Anyone who disrupts the public hearing could be asked to leave. We, as members of county council, are interested in gathering the facts on all particular subject matters. Everyone that's here is asked to please abide by these guidelines so that this public hearing process can proceed smoothly and all who wish to speak have the opportunity to do so. First, we have Mr. George Morris. Mr. George Morris? One moment, Mr. Morris, let me read the ordinance. No, you're fine, you can come on up to the podium, sir. And this public hearing is in reference to ordinance number 2024-06, a fiscal year 2024-2025 operating budget for Williamsburg County. An ordinance to provide for the levy of taxes in Williamsburg County for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2025, to provide for the appropriation thereof, to provide for revenues for the payment thereof, to provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds, and to provide for other matters related thereto. Again, our public hearing tonight is only to discuss this particular issue. If you want to discuss another issue, we would ask that you schedule another time with one of our future meetings to discuss those issues. But anything dealing with the public hearing tonight is only about our budget hearing. Mr. Morris, I'm sorry, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, I got two concerns.
Okay.
It seems like the taxes have been raised.
Oh, one second. Again, three minutes.
Okay, the taxes have been raised, and just recently it seemed like they're about to be raised again. I just want to say I'm against that, and I wanted to ask another question about the taxes. Far as why can't we pay quarterly instead of waiting till the end of the year to pay the property taxes? And that's the question that I wanted to ask, and that's about it.
Okay, thank you so much. Ms. Gloria Burgess?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Ms. Burgess.
Um, you all raised tax last year, and we have a lot of, you have a lot of elderly in here who are 80. We done do our work, and you still want to raise tax on us again. And it's hard on a lot of these elderly, including myself, because I'm half sick.
Yes, ma'am.
And when you go to buy food, and the tax up there, and we done work and got our home, we would like to don't lose our home. You all ought to think about that and prepare for us in our old days. Look after us, please.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Yes, ma'am, thank you, Ms. Burgess. Ms. Sharon Presley?
Good evening, one and all.
Good evening.
Sharon Presley, 201 Pinckney Road, King Street, South Carolina. Phone number 843-382-2648. I came to address the proposed increase in taxes. I'm against increasing the taxes because the taxes that are being paid currently are not addressing all the needs that we have. Like, we have inferior road repair, especially on Pinckney Road from Highway 261 until it goes to the opposite end, to Gorstown Road, where it ends, they repair or put pothole repair stuff, and it lasts two days and at the most a week. Then the following month, they come back doing the same thing. We have craters on Pinckney Road. Well, you know, you got to get a wheel alignment over and over again, which is crazy. And we need better water filtration and drainage in low-lying areas in the county. We need fiber, more fiber optics so that we can have proper internet access and phone services. Calls are dropped all the time. You know, you're speaking and you're in an important conversation. Next thing your call is, then it take you another 30 minutes to hour to get back through, depending on whom you're talking to, and that's terrible. Then, in the rural areas, we also need sanitation. A lot of people are elderly, a lot of people can't get to the different dump sites easily. Their access is very limited, so we need to have pickups in the rural areas of the county. So those are the things that I'd like this new budget that you're going to use to address that will make me and I'm sure many of the residents in Williamsburg County more satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Presley. Dr. Mary S. Nelson, excuse me, Reverend Dr. Mary S. Nelson.
Public supervisor and council?
Yes, ma'am.
I am here because I understand this meeting is supposed to be about taxes, and not knowing just how your office run, I was wondering if the taxes have anything to do with the preparations and the reconstructing of the rural roads? If not, I can come back at another time, because I really am concerned about the conditions of our rural roads and highways. You know, it messes up our cars, it's dangerous to have roads the way they are in the district where I serve, which is the Woodstock, Coleman, and Chapman area of our county. And I don't think these roads have been cared for since they've been paved. And I was just wondering if the revenues of taxes have anything to do with why the roads never get repaired? I know you all come out sometime and do a little dab of concrete or tar or something in a hole, but we need the roads fixed, we need them repaved. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Cheryl Lane?
Cheryl Lane, 76 Mount Vernon Road, Greeleyville, South Carolina. I just have one question. When can we see a copy of the ordinance that you're going to vote on tonight?
Ms. Cheryl, of course, the other folks here do not know this, but I'm sure that you do, because this is not the first time that you've come before county council for a public hearing. You know, and for the benefit of all of you that are not here, typically county council does not respond during the public hearing sections of the meeting. That is your opportunity to tell us how you all feel. So I wanted to go ahead and just clear that up. So if you want to go ahead and move on and just tell us how you feel about this particular issue, we'll be more than happy to hear what you have to say.
Well, it's kind of like I used to tell my students in school, you have to do your homework first. So I don't know how we can respond when we don't know what you're proposing. So if we don't know what you're looking at for the budget for next year, we're just up here kind of talking because we don't know what you're thinking. So if we had had a copy ahead of time, then we could have done our homework, and we would have good questions that we could ask. Otherwise, we just have to stand here and say, we don't want our taxes raised, which I think everybody in this room is probably here for the same thing. We don't want our taxes raised. So we can comment to that, but we can't make a specific comment on what you're proposing for the third reading unless we have a copy of it.
Right. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Mr. Thomas Stuckey?
Good evening. My name is Thomas Stuckey, live in this place called Neesmith. I don't know whether you've heard of it or not, but I want to tell all the councilmen that we don't need our taxes increased, we need spending cut. I haven't heard anybody tonight or any time in the past say what they're going to cut. You know, I want to look at each and every one of you, and I'd like for you to tell me, what are you proposing to cut? When I run out of money in my household, I don't delay it, postpone it, call the power people and tell them, you know, I have no choice, I can't pay you. I have to cut. I have to cut back on my usage. I have to cut back on my spending. Now, county council should operate the same as any other budget, any other budgetary council. Again, I want to know what you plan to cut. That's the solution to our problem. You got to cut something. And anybody that raises my taxes, the only thing I can do is remember you in November. And I want you to all hear that. But like I said, we need somebody to be brave enough to stand up and say what they're planning to cut. What are you planning to cut? That's the solution. There's no, that's the only common sense. You know, my road's in bad shape, everything is in bad shape, but if we want to fix every road making brand new, we're going to have to double or triple our taxes. I don't want that. I got enough problems, enough expenses. But I just wanted to point that out to you and bring it to your attention. I'd like for somebody to tell me what you're planning to cut. That's what we need to hear. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vernal Fulton? Mr. Vernal Fulton, okay, I thought I saw him earlier.
Vernal Fulton, I was just sitting back there wondering whether you were going to cut tax or we going to up the tax. The only thing I'm saying is that if we going to up the tax, we need to do enough so you won't have to come back again. Let the people get used to what it going to cost to operate Williamsburg County. You need to do it, because we go to Florence County, we pay two or three taxes. And I don't think we had an increase here with the millage or whatever for the last couple of years or whatever. I don't know who in last year had a millage increase. I know you had something back here not too long ago, but I don't know whether that was enough. So, but I'm just saying, if you're going to raise the tax, you need to raise it up high enough so that it will take care your spend to for the county, and you wouldn't have to be coming back every once in a while raising the tax. So just remember that. If you're going to raise it, get it up high enough so it'll take care the expense for Williamsburg County.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Mrs. Anita McNellidge? You have to come to the podium, please. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Ms. Washington.
Hey.
How are you, y'all?
Yes.
The question I really had is not relating to this.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, they can't hear you. Okay, I think what she said is the question that she had was not related to the budget. Thank you so much, Ms. McNellidge. Mr. Jack Wilson?
Good evening.
Yes, sir, Mr. Wilson. Good evening.
My name is Jack Wilson. My address is 1049 Wilson Chapel Road, King Street, South Carolina, zip 29556.
Yes, sir.
I'm a native of Williamsburg County, a property owner, and a registered voter. I would like to say that I am not in favor of raising millage, synonymous with taxes, except for Councilman Lee of District 1 and Councilwoman Hales of District 7. I'm disappointed with this council. If any of the rest of you can show us any data that you have saying that majority of taxpayers in your district favor raising millage, I will sit down and shut up. If not, I'm not here to tell you how to do your job, but I will say that your job is not to tell us what we need. I wonder how many of you council representatives can go or have gone into taxpayers' homes despite the demographics and had conversations with them concerning what it is that they need, what it is that they want, what they will support, what they can afford. I know there's a program that periodically, periodically has an open forum for citizens to discuss matters, but it too is missing its mark. I've missed two out of three. My house, in my house, if my income doesn't increase, my outgoing can't increase. We live within our means. We don't take or borrow from Peter to pay Paul. We don't try to keep up with the Joneses. This is like deja vu. Here we go again. Last administration, you saw no other way but to increase our water bills, to pay your way out of whatever it is that you got yourself into. And I say you because you don't consult us. Before the previous administration, there was an issue with the landfill that we were still paying for. I expect this administration to be more creative, transparent, and detailed. If you can't do that, we, the citizens of Williamsburg County, haven't made any progress. I'm done. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, sir. Isaac Taft?
Good evening to the panel.
Good evening, sir.
As I sit here and listen to individuals here, as I go one by one, I heard a lot of reasons. Some person says they want to know about why the third reading. My question is, were you here for the first and the second reading? As I look upon this crowd, I have come to meeting after meeting after meeting, and sometimes there's only six people for a council meeting. The council meeting is the first Monday of every month and the third Tuesday of every month. Where were you? Where were you when these people was making their decisions? You put them in the office to make a change, but yet you don't want to give them the opportunity to make a change. Were you here when the state auditor came here and told this council that the taxes on this council and this county was not raised in 14 years? 14 people, until they did it last year, that was the first one. You talk about doing your research. Trust me, I'm a person, former military, I have to do my research. Okay, once again, you talk about the roads. Do you know how much it costs to do a road? Over $1 million for a mile. Take your time, people, do the research before you come up here and complain. Yes, I would like to see the taxes raised. I'm tired going through every freaking county and seeing that they are doing well. When I go down 17, I do not know when Mouse Corner Inn and Goose Creek begin. I do not know where Goose Creek Inn and Somerville begin because they're building. Why? Because they have infrastructure. Why? Because they have business. How could you expect a business to come to the county when you don't have no sewage? What, you want to build a septic tank? You talk about water. You know why the water bill went up? I'll tell you why. Because why do you know about a grant? Do you know how a grant is run? Do your research. This county is responsible for 20% of a grant. So what they have to do, they have to figure out how could they make that 20% work? I know my time is running out, but I'm tired of not seeing this county grow because ignorance is keeping it from growing. You give those people a job, stop tying their hands. Do the work. Do the work. Start complaining. Stop, if you don't have any money, stop eating out. Okay? Cook for a change. Cook! Stand up for the beautician. Do go back to the natcha way. Do your own hair. Okay? Stop tying these people's hands. Stop it. I'm tired. Find out where Williamsburg County is in the 46th county, probably in the lower five. Somebody can dress that, please dress that and let them know. Forget the other five seconds, I'm through.
Ms. Valerie Fullmore?
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Fullmore.
My name is Valerie Fullmore. I live at 160 Shady Lane, King Street, South Carolina, 2956, 29556. I too can honestly agree with everything that was said up here from what everybody has said, okay? From Mr. Stuckey and even some of the things that the last gentleman said. But I too am against raising the taxes, and I'm going to tell you why. I understand that the county needs revenue because that's how the county runs, but we must find a more equitable way to do it. Now, maybe you need to look at getting a consultant to come in here to give you some ideas on how to generate revenue for the county. Maybe you can look at a bond, maybe a tax, a sales tax, but you need to find a more equitable way than to keep burdening the property owners of Williamsburg County. When I look at my neighborhood, when I look at my mother's neighborhood, the majority of the homeowners are elderly people, elderly females, okay? And to just keep taxing them, they're on a fixed income, and they can't afford much more. As Mr. Stuckey said, when money gets tight, you look at ways to cut other ways. But I am in agreement with a lot of the things that were said, but we have to find a more equitable way that will include more people to generate more revenue for this county and not just put it on the property owners. I work at a job where I feel I should make more money because I know you're going to probably say that the county employees haven't had a raise. And I don't mean this in a disrespectful way, but if I worked at a job and I felt I didn't make enough money, you know what I would do? I'd go find another job someplace else. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Rosa Fleming?
Good evening. My name is Rosa Fleming. I reside at 1009 Gorstown Road.
Yes, ma'am.
And it has been said by some of the people who came before me, you know, when you need money to do something, first of all, you should go through your budget, and I don't know if you've done that, and see where you can cut taxes. And maybe, I think most of the people are making a pretty decent salary. Sometimes you can ask them if they want to give back something. But most of the people in Williamsburg County, I know around in the area where I live, there are about 12 widows in that small area, over 65. I'm 89, with, you know, no other income except the little social security that we're getting. So you really need to look at some other way of, you know, getting this money that you need. Perhaps you can do a sales tax on non-food items. And I tell you, if you do a tax on cosmetics and hair, you get a lot of money. Thank you.
That's it. That's it. That's it. All right. Well, first and foremost, I want to thank each and every one of you all for your comments tonight on our democracy in this country is built on the promise that citizens have the right to air their grievances and concerns with their local governments. Again, I thank each of you all for coming out tonight and participating in this public hearing. I'd also like to thank the members of county council for their hard work on this budget. As I shared with someone earlier this week, this is the only time of the year that we have differences of opinion, and I believe that each one of them would agree with me with that assessment. With that being said, I want to present some information to you all, and there should be something coming up on the screen behind me momentarily. And I would ask that you all, please, ma'am and please, sir, please take notes of this information because I wanted to clear the air on a few things that have been said tonight. But more importantly, I want to clear the air on some information that has been put out into the community that's certainly not accurate. First and foremost, let's go back to January of 2023 when we arrived here. The first thing that we realized was that we had a $2 million deficit, of which we've cut half already, so we're down to $1 million. The county of Williamsburg received $5.8 million in American Rescue Plan funds in 2021 and 2022. When I arrived here, those funds were not here. Those funds were gone. We have not had any additional revenues in 16 years. This council went 16 years without raising taxes. Last year was the first year that the county of Williamsburg raised taxes in 16 years. Now, that is a fact, and anybody that's told you anything different is either not telling you the truth or they don't know what they're talking about. Last year was the first time in 16 years that this Williamsburg County council raised taxes on its residents. Now, you all have received increases on your taxes, and I'm going to get to that in a minute, and I'm going to show you where they came from. But they did not come from my predecessors or these other members of council. Now, during that 16 years, we've had increases in our health care costs for our employees. We've had increases in our retirement costs for our employees, all of which, these budgets... budgets absorbed. We didn't increase revenues, we didn't increase taxes in order to do that. We absorbed it. Meanwhile, the monies that we were receiving from the state decreased. It went down. So I want you to think for a second about your own home expenses where you've got more money going out, and then the money you got coming in, all of a sudden gets reduced. It creates an even worse hardship for you, and that's what happened to us here in Williamsburg County over the last fifteen, sixteen years. We have a three point five million dollar tax anticipation note that's due every spring. That is money that we borrow, that we borrow in July to make it to January when the taxes come in. It's the equivalent of you going and getting a, a, a payday cash loan till your paycheck comes in. That's how this government has been operating. I spoke with the former treasurer, Ms. Pearl Brown, about two or three months ago, and she asked me, how much was the tax anticipation note? And I told her three point five million dollars now. She said, my God, Kelvin, when I left there, it was one point five million. We're borrowing more money to keep the county running. Now, we've got to pay interest on that money. We're not getting that money for free. We've got to pay interest on that money. Now, with that being said, we don't have a fund balance either. A fund balance is a rainy day fund, just in case something happens. We don't have anything like that here in Williamsburg County. Go to the next slide, please. Now, here's where your money went. Now, let's talk about, if you want to talk about taxes, I want to talk about them. County government, that's us, Williamsburg County Government, from two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty-three, there were no tax increases from us. There was none. Last year was the first time we increased taxes on you all in sixteen years. Now, your taxes did go up, but it was by the school district. It wasn't us. It wasn't us. It was the school district, beginning in two thousand eighteen, two point one three mils. Two thousand nineteen, five point six one mils. Twenty twenty, one point eight one mils. Twenty twenty-one, one point seven mils. Twenty twenty-two, four point seven mils. Twenty twenty-three, eleven point six mils. And yes, this year, four point one two mils, for a total of thirty-eight point one seven mils since two thousand fifteen, actually, since two thousand eighteen. That's not us. That's not us, y'all. We didn't do that. Now, how many of you all have gone to a school board meeting, raising any sand about your tax bill? They have school board meetings every month, just like we have them, right here in this room. Right here in this room. Now, how many of you all have gone raising sand over there? You never heard of it exactly. But now, this, wait a minute, let me finish. Now, let everybody talk. I let everybody came up here and talked, said whatever they wanted to say, and we sat here and we took it. We took it. So now, it's our turn, okay? This council, they're, I'm presenting this. They didn't know I was going to give this to you all till about thirty minutes ago. But I wanted you all to know the truth because we've got people running around in this community spreading misinformation. Let's just call it what it is, lies. It's lies. It is lies. This, what I'm showing you right now is the truth, and if you look at the bottom, it says reference. So I want you all to go take a look at where I got this information from so you will know that what I'm presenting to you all tonight is the truth. And nothing but the truth, as I said, is what you should say in my former line of work. The next slide, millage increase charge. Now, let's talk about what your taxes are going to go up if this budget passes with a millage increase, okay? Because we haven't voted yet. Zero to fifty thousand dollars taxable value of your home. That's what's on your tax notice. Zero to eight dollars on, on, on the first fifty thousand. The second fifty thousand, which is fifty thousand to a hundred thousand, eight dollars to sixteen dollars. One hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, sixteen dollars to twenty-four thousand. A hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred thousand, twenty-four to thirty-two dollars. Now, the taxable value of homes, I want you to look at the number of homes in Williamsburg County that fit into these taxable value sections. We have over six thousand, slightly over six thousand homes that fit in the zero to fifty thousand dollar range. That means they're only going to get a zero to eight dollar tax increase. Now, those folks, and we will talk about this shortly, who fit within a category where they get homestead exemption, will not get any increase, which I would suspect would be many of you all that are here tonight. Now, fifty thousand to a hundred thousand, we have twelve thousand homes in that group. They're going to get between eight dollars and sixteen dollars. Hundred thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand, six thousand homes. Hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred thousand is twenty-seven hu, twenty, we have twenty-seven hundred homes that would fit into that category. And again, right beside it is what increases that they are in. Now, I don't, I don't want anybody to be offended about what I'm about to say. And normally, when people say that, they're getting ready to say something to offend you. But folks, those of us that live in or have properties in excess of a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars, twenty-four to thirty dollars, you're not going to see that. Okay? If you go to lunch, you take your wife to lunch, that's twenty-five dollars. Okay? I stopped by Dunkin' Donuts this morning and got a, probably some of y'all probably looking at me saying, you ain't got no business in Dunkin' Donuts. Okay, but you mind your business, okay? I got a medium coffee, a coffee roll, and the cheapest sandwich that they had, and it was eleven dollars and something. Okay? Eleven dollars and something. This is what it's going to cost. Now, I want to, the next slide, I want to talk about the homestead exemption for a minute because I want to make sure that everyone understands what that is. The homestead exemption is a complete exemption of taxes on the first fifty thousand dollars in fair market value of your legal residence for homeowners over age sixty-five. Those that are totally and permanently disabled and also those that are legally blind. You, the, the state pays the taxes for you for the first fifty thousand dollars, and they give that money back to the county on your behalf. So you don't even pay that. And so if you're in a home that fits within that zero to fifty thousand dollar range and you're sixty-five years of age, and that's your legal residence, okay? Or you're totally and permanently disabled, or you're legally blind, how much of a tax increase are you going to get? Zero. None. None. Contrary to what you've been being told, you're not going to get a tax increase. Again, for those between zero and fifty thousand dollars, that, who's, who's, that's your fair market value of your property, zero to fifty thousand dollars, and you're over sixty-five or over, totally and permanently disabled, or legally blind, you will not get an increase. The state will pay that for you, okay? Let's go to the, just go to the last slide. They must be didn't hear me. Folks, let me, it simply boils down to this. Everywhere I go, people talking about growth, and they want Williamsburg to grow, and I want it to grow. That's why I came back and ran, because I wanted this county to be better. You get no growth without change. You keep doing the same thing, you're going to keep getting the same results. That's it. We got to do something different. We can't keep doing what we've been doing. It's just not going to work. Over the past eighteen months, we've been working diligently to improve the financial condition of our county. Again, I want to publicly thank the members of my staff, all the elected and appointed officials, and all of the employees of Williamsburg County. They've worked hard over the last eighteen months, and I owe them and we owe them a debt of gratitude for their hard work and dedication. As I advised you all last year, for those of you all that were at the meeting last year or paid attention to the meeting last year, we have been operating these budgets in deficits for years. State law says that you can't do that, okay? Please go back to the previous screen because I want to make sure they see what the state law says. We've been dragging along slow debt and old bills for years. Our finance teams have had to decide between paying payroll or paying bills. Obviously, they've decided each time to pay payroll for our employees to make sure that our employees can continue to take care of their families. We found that it is illegal for us to continue to operate our government like that. The good news is that we have cut the deficit in half, but we still have a slight deficit that we've got to deal with. Again, the deficit is not being considered in this budget. It is being that, and it is something that we have to take care of, and we're going to take care of it. We took care of half of it last year. We're going, we're going to work and do everything that we can do to take care of the other half either this year or as soon as we can. We're going to do it. We've done half already in one year. One year, we've knocked half that deficit off, and I'm saying "we" because I didn't do it by myself. I didn't do it by myself. Until last year, Williamsburg County has gone longer than any other county in South Carolina without a tax increase. Does that mean we much better off than any other county in, in, in South Carolina? But we went longer than any other county. Any other county, I, I would think we may have gone longer than any county in the southeast. Sixteen years, y'all. I spoke with one of the former council members earlier today. I said, part of the problem is y'all gave them a break for sixteen years because we should have been doing incremental increases along the way, and we didn't. And it's caused us to be in this mess that we're in because we, we are in a mess. If you recall, last year, I asked for a ten mil increase to try to offset some of what we were dealing with. We received seven. Now, again, I asked you that you take a look at your personal finances, and I want you to ask yourself, could I pay my current bills at the same level of money I'm receiving that I was receiving at sixty, that I was receiving sixteen years ago? Could you pay your current bills? Because all of us have gone in the store and bought groceries lately. Listen, our employees don't get a discount at the grocery store. Okay? They don't get a discount at a gas station. They pay the same thing everybody else pays. That's how we've been operating the government, y'all, over the last several, several years. We have not taken into consideration the cost of living increases, increases in retirement, increases in healthcare insurance, decreases in revenue, and increases in inflation, increases in inflation. All of the things that all of us have had to consider in our households, we have not taken those things into consideration in the operation of our government. We have kicked the can down the road. That's what we did. But guess what, y'all? Ain't much can left, and we about to run out of road. It just, it's not. All of the other counties, all of the other counties have been increasing taxes by a small amount each year to keep up with changes and increases in the cost of living and the cost to do business. We have not done that in Williamsburg County, and that's, and that has caused us to continue to fall further and further behind other counties. Now, yes, let me address this issue again. Yes, your taxes have increased over the years, but as I showed you all just now, it was not this council or county government. Your taxes have been increased by the school district, not county government. I repeat, this council has only increased your taxes one time in the past sixteen years, and that was last year. The large majority of the tax increases that you have received have been from the school district and not county government. In fact, our school taxes have increased each year for the last several years, and our current school board didn't even have the authority to do it, but it was done anyway. Our school district currently has over fifteen million dollars in its fund balance while we currently have no fund balance. Okay? They are also not operating in a deficit while we have a deficit. Currently, we have around a million dollars in old or slow debt that's got to be paid and is going to be paid. That is where our deficit is coming from. We're meeting with council regularly to discuss ways to address this. But in order for our county to operate successfully, we must be able to have credit with our vendors, just like you have to have credit with people to do business. But that credit's got to be paid on time consistently if we expect those vendors to continue to do business with us. Some of our vendors are beginning to threaten legal action because we haven't paid them on a time, in a timely manner. If we don't run our households like this, y'all, why do we think it's okay to run our county government like that? In addition, again, state law mandates that we got to have this balanced budget with no deficit, and we're going to get rid of this deficit. Now, in this respect, as I said earlier, this government is very similar to our household. If you expect to continue to be extended credit, then you got to pay your bills on time. Now, we are committed to working together to continue to address this issue, and we're going to get it resolved. This problem was not created overnight. It's not going to be resolved overnight. I'm pleased, though, that we've been able to cut the deficit in half over the last twelve months, and I, again, I commend each one of these members of this council, our staff, the elected and appointed officials, and certainly all of our employees. Now, y'all, we have a number of employees that are not making livable wages. Many of those employees have tremendous positions of trust within our government. We have a duty to you, to you all as citizens, to place people in these positions that possess honesty and integrity. Clerks at fast food restaurants should not be making more than some of our government employees that have enormous financial responsibilities. Now, I've attempted, we have attempted to address some of this within this proposed budget. I want you all to know tonight that we have employees that are making less than eight dollars per hour. How can we expect somebody to take care of a family these days on less than eight dollars an hour? Could you take care of your family at seven, seventy-five an hour? We, now, y'all, we can do better than that. Our employees have to pay the same thing for groceries and gas and medication that everybody else in this room has to pay. As I said earlier, we don't have a fund balance. Now, let me explain about a fund balance. A fund balance is basically a savings account for governments. It's a rainy day fund. And again, we don't have one. Fund balances are important to have in case of an emergency such as a natural disaster. If we, if we were to have a natural disaster right now, I'm not sure what we were going to be able to do about it because we don't have a fund balance to tap into. Fund balances also help with long-range planning to meet goals that we might have for our county and to also show potential investors in our community that we are financially stable. As I said earlier about the tax anticipation note, and that it was one point five million dollars of several years ago, and now it's three point five million dollars. Now, again, a tax anticipation note is basically a cash advance loan. It's just like getting a check cash-in loan. It's a loan that we get in July to run the government until January when the taxes start coming in. When you pay your taxes, we have to put that money aside so we can pay that tax anticipation note. And yes, we're paying that loan with interest. Folks, that's going in the wrong direction for this county. We should be reducing that amount, not increasing it. I'm telling you all tonight, we're going to reduce that tax anticipation note this year. It's going to come down. It may, I don't care if it don't come down to ten dollars. It's coming down because we cannot continue to operate at this level. Now, we're working together as a team to create an operating budget and financial system for our county to succeed and not just survive. If we expect to attract better-paying jobs here, we must first start by getting our financial house in order. We cannot expect industries to locate here if we're barely hanging on financial. We cannot expect industries to locate here if we're barely hanging on financially. Now, a lot of y'all talk about what's happening in other counties. But those other counties invested in their communities through tax increases and charges for services. If we want what other counties have, then we will have to make the sacrifices that other counties have made. We cannot continue to do the same things that we've been doing and expect a different result. We all know that the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again, but expecting a different result. As I've said many times before, and I'll continue to say, just because Williamsburg County has always been a certain way, it doesn't mean that we gotta stay this way. We have people that are willing, y'all, to help us move forward, but we gotta be willing to help ourselves. In the past, we have paid people, we have paid financial advisors to give us advice on what to do to move this county forward. And guess what? We didn't listen. We didn't do what they told us to do, and right now, we paying the price for it. The other counties, you know what they did? They listened to those investors, and they have been successful. They took the advice of, of their financial advisors, and it has paid off for them. Y'all, if we keep doing the same things, we gonna keep getting the same results. In fact, it might even get worse. Williamsburg County, we gotta do something different. We gotta work together in order to create a better county for our people. Many of us, as I look across this room, many of us, I know y'all been, we've been praying, all of us, for a long time for the success of this community. But the Book of James says, "Faith without works is dead." Williamsburg County, we can do better than what we've been doing. And with God's help, I know that we can do better. But we gotta step out on faith. Now, I'm seeing everywhere, everybody around us. Every county around us, I'm watching them enjoying their promised land. While some of us are still fussing with Moses about why he led us out of Egyptian bondage. Others of us have become complacent, wandering around in the wilderness. Don't you all think we've been wandering around in the wilderness long enough? Isn't it time for us to enjoy a little bit of the promised land and what it's got to offer? One thing I can sure, assure you of is that we will never experience the promised land if we could keep having a wilderness mindset. We will never experience a promised land if we continue to believe that we would be better off in Egypt in bondage. Folks, we will never have growth without change. The two go in hand. Mahat, the great Mahatma Gandhi once said that changes in the world begin with changes with us. Williamsburg County, changes within this county will begin with changes within us. We will never have growth without change. I thank you all tonight. I thank this council. I thank all of the appointed and elected officials. I thank my staff. I thank you all, the citizens. I thank you all for tonight. I thank you all for coming out to showing us that you all are concerned about this government. I thank you all. Because after the last Tuesday's poor showing at the polls, I was a little worried. I thought that you all had just given up on this county. And we can't give up on this county, y'all. Again, I thank you all. I pray God's blessings upon each and every one of you all, your homes and your families. And I pray God's continued blessings upon the county that we all have called home and decided to call home. Our beloved county of Williamsburg, our home. Again, I thank you all. At this time... At this time, we're going to have, we're gonna call the meeting, our regularly scheduled county council meeting, um, to order. I'm gonna ask, um, Councilman McKnight if he would lead us with the invocation tonight.
Oh, please bow your head. Heavenly Father, we come to you so humble in asking you for wisdom, understanding, and guidance. Please put a blessing on council tonight that we do what's right for the people. Don't worry about next election. Let's do what's right for the people. Let's give them what, what they deserve, what they need, what make this county better. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you so much. The public hearing has been closed. Um, we're now beginning the council meeting. And we're now beginning our council meeting. Public hearing has been closed. All right. We have the minutes from our last meeting, our June thirty, June third meeting. Is there a motion to accept the minutes from our June third meeting?
So moved.
So we have a motion to accept the minutes from our June third meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Are we ready for questions? All right, all those in favor in accepting our minutes, uh, from the June third meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please note that the motion has been carried. Now, I do need to make an adjustment, uh, in the, um, agenda. I would like to have, um, the, um, folks from Love and Bailey Associates, um, to come before us through, um, Zoom because they could not be here tonight. They're on kind of a tight schedule. And, uh, I wanted them to present to us our Williamsburg County Transit System Audit Financial Statements for Fiscal Year 2022 and Fiscal Year 2023. I believe we have with us Mr. Will Walls.
Yes, sir. Can y'all hear me?
Sure.
Mr. Washington, can you hear me?
We, we ask that those of you all that are going to remain, and we ask that you all please remain if you can. Um, but we do have some business that we do have to discuss. So if you're going to, um, remain, we ask that you please hold the noise down to a minimum, please. Thank you, Mr. Lee. All right, Mr. Walls. Hold one second. Um, do I, can I get a motion to amend the agenda to move them up first?
So moved.
We have a motion?
Banging.
We have a second? Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Or please note that the motion has been carried to move them up in the agenda. Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. Will. Of course, this thing worked all day, and now it's not working.
Uh, Mr. Washington, this is, this is Chris Clark. I am texting with Will. I think he's, um, reconnecting. Um, it froze on him for some reason.
Thank you so much. Mr. Clark is, um, CPA from Paragon Advisory, um, Solutions, I believe it is. And he is a CPA that is helping us, um, get our financial, our finances in order. And he's been working along, he, alongside our financial staff as well as working with, um, our auditor, which is Love Bailey and Associates. Will, are you there?
Are y'all, can y'all hear me now?
Yes, sir, we can hear you. Thank you so much.
All right, perfect, perfect. Sorry about that. It always seems to have technical difficulties when you really need it, right?
Absolutely. All right, the floor is yours, Will.
I'm sorry?
The, the floor is yours, or Chris, however, y'all wanna go first. Yeah, I'll leave it.
All right, okay. Uh, so, uh, again, my name is Will Walls, and I'm an audit manager at Love Bailey and Associates. Uh, and I just wanted to specify, this is for the Williamsburg County Transit System Audit, uh, itself, not for the Williamsburg County as, as a whole. Um, so this is basically just, just a department of Williamsburg County that we're presenting this audit on, uh, tonight. And this is for the 2022 and 2023, uh, fiscal years, uh, which both end at six, in six thirty. But before we, before I go over any kind of numbers or the actual audit itself, we always kind of like to go over what our responsibility is for the audit along with, uh, the transit systems' responsibility for the audit. So our main, uh, responsibility for the audit is to issue an opinion, uh, which provides reasonable assurance that the financial statements are materially correct. Uh, so we basically get the, the trial balance and audit those numbers on the trial balance, uh, for reasonableness. And we also like to disclose that we, we review, perform a review of internal controls, but our audit is not designed specifically to detect fraud. Uh, we have, we have procedures in place to try to detect that, up to which we had no discoveries for the 2022 or 2023 audit. Um, and then lastly, our audit does not address the financial condition or provide a, any kind of suggestions as to what direction transit should take. So ultimately, that's a management, uh, responsibility. And in order for us to maintain independence as the independent auditor, we cannot, uh, make management decisions or provide any kind of direction as to what y'all should or should not be doing, uh, with, with your, with your monies. So our, so, so Transit's main responsibility, uh, is to maintain effective internal controls and regularly assess risks. So that's proper approvals and sign-offs on payables, payroll, uh, timely remittances of, of, of grant reimbursements and, and, and things of that nature. Um, so for the 2022 and 2023 audit, there were two internal control findings. One related to, uh, the general ledger is not being reviewed and balanced monthly. So, uh, as a result, there were some transactions that were posted to incorrect accounts. Uh, and then most importantly, the grant reimbursements, uh, from South Carolina Department of Transportation is not being submitted and received in a timely fashion. So, uh, as you can imagine, when you're not receiving those funds timely, it's hard for the, the organization to operate effectively and as, and as efficiently as they can.
Uh-oh, Will froze again. Can you hear us, Mr. Washington?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, I can.
Yeah. I don't know what happened to Will. Um, I can fill in briefly while he reconnects, I guess, if you would like me to. There he is. Go ahead, Will, you're back.
Uh, you're back, Will.
Hold on one second.
Okay.
Let's see. Trying to get everything back to where it was. Sorry about that. Um, but anyway, so the opinion for the 2022 and 2023 audit, uh, for the transit system was a qualified opinion. And this basically means that the financial statements are presented in all material respects, uh, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles with, uh, the exception of inventory balance, uh, for 2022 and 2023 and the OPEB balance in 2023. So, uh, the, the main reason for that was because to issue an opinion on that balance of inventory at six thirty, uh, we technically needed to perform a inventory observation based on, uh, materiality for the audit, and we were unable to do that, obviously, because we were doing the audit in 2024. Uh, and, and, and that is the main reason for the qualified opinions for both years. Uh, next, to, to go into a little more details on the financial statements themselves, your income statement, which is basically, which is your statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position. Uh, your total operating revenues, uh, was three hundred and fourteen thousand in 2022, compared to four hundred and fifty-four thousand in 2023. Uh, so the, the increase there was mostly related to more Medicaid revenues received in 2023. Your total operating expenses were one point five million in 2022, compared to one point nine million in 2023. Uh, overall, expenses increased three hundred and ten thousand. Uh, and, but that was a result of a pension adjustment in 2022 that reduced the personnel and benefits by four hundred and fifty-two thousand. And that pension adjustment in 2023 was only, uh, it only reduced that, that personnel and benefits by thirty-two thousand. Your total non-operating income was nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand in 2022 and nine hundred and fifty-one thousand in 2023. So there wasn't a, a large, uh, change there. Overall, your, your transit system had a negative change in net position of three hundred and seven thousand in 2022, compared to a negative change in net position of four hundred and fifty-five thousand in 2023. So those are the highlights of the income statement and the, the balance sheet of the statement of net position. Uh, your total assets, your total assets at June thirtieth, 2022 was one point nine million. Uh, that was reduced to one point three million in 2023. That decrease was mostly due to depreciation expense of two hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, no additions to capital assets during the year. And then your cash and investments also decreased three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars during the year. So your, your total liabilities at six thirty, 2022 and 2023 were both, uh, at two point three million dollars. So no, no big changes in your liabilities, uh, year over year. And then your total net position, uh, decreased from four hundred and thirty, from a four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar deficit in 2022 to a deficit of eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars in 2023. So those were, those were the biggest, uh, points of the, of the audit for both 2022 and 2023 for the transit system. And right now, I will, uh, open it up for any kind of questions that, uh, you all may have regarding the, the, the audit.
Do any of the members of council have any questions? Mr. Clark.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to give you an opportunity to also, um, talk about a few things as well, um, about, you know, what you discovered over there and that sort of thing.
Yeah, um, I do believe that the actions the county has taken in the last several months is positioning itself to, um, get out of the clouds and, and turn the boat, well, I guess it's a plane versus a boat, but turn it around and head the right direction. Um, the, uh, the billing, the billing issues, I think, a lot had to do with COVID and some of the disruption at the state level in regards to, uh, some of the funding announcements and the way they were extending grants and, um, adding funds left and right from the CARES Act. Um, all that, it's not a valid excuse, in my opinion, for not having done the billing. But I do believe the COVID, uh, situation did contribute to this because in June 2022, uh, keep in mind, uh, that that, uh, started in July twenty-one, which was still pretty heavy COVID, uh, time at that point. Um, and then when fiscal twenty-three ran or came around, your reimbursements build on one another. You have to do the oldest one first. You can't just start mid-year without doing them one by one. And so I think they got behind the eight ball, um, in filling those in. And then I think Meredith, Meredith's involvement, as well as, uh, another consultant y'all are helping, uh, have hired, will really get the transit department headed the proper direction. Uh, so I do feel like management's response has been really, really good, in my personal opinion, in regards to the findings the auditor has expressed.
Okay. Thank you so much. Um, do any of the members of council, uh, have any questions for Mr. Walls or Mr. Clark? Okay. I do want to take the opportunity while we're here, um, to recognize two people that are in the audience with us. Um, first, we want to recognize Ms. Meredith Green, who is our finance director. Um, stand up, Meredith. Meredith, uh, Ms. Green is our finance director. Thank you so much. I didn't know you had a fan club. All right. And I also want to, um, recognize Ms. Alicia Wickfall. Uh, Ms. Alicia Wickfall is the new, uh, executive director over at Williamsburg County Transit. Um, we were, um, able, um, to, she, um, has a, a vast, uh, amount of experience, uh, in transit. In fact, she was the, um, operations director for Carter, uh, which is down in Charleston. And I think Carter has the largest, uh, mass transportation system in South Carolina. And she was their operations director. And so we're very fortunate to get her, and she certainly has, uh, began to move, to turn things around over at Transit, um, since, uh, she's been there. And again, we want to thank her and Meredith and the other, uh, members of our staff and, and everyone who has, uh, been, uh, so helpful in helping us, uh, to move the county forward. Um, any, um, of the members of council with anything to add, um, or any other comments? Um, any, um, of the members of council with anything to add, um, or any other comments? Madam County Attorney, do we need to do separate motions for each year, or can I do a motion for both years at the same time? We can do them all at the same time. All right. So is there a motion to accept, uh, the audit from Love Bailey and Associates, um, for fiscal year 2022 and fiscal year 2023 of our Williamsburg County Transit System? Is there a motion to accept?
Motion to accept, um, financial audit for year twenty-two and year twenty-three. Banging.
All right, so we have a motion, and it's been properly second. Are we ready for question? All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, please let the record reflect that the motion has been carried. Thank you all so much. Mr. Walls, thank you. Um, Mr. Clark, thank you as well. And again, Ms. Wickfall and Ms. Green, thank you all. And, uh, Chris, I think we'll be seeing you and Will in a couple of weeks, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good.
I appreciate it.
Okay. I think it's just Chris. I'm sorry, Will, but we'll be calling you, Will. All right, thank you all so much. Appreciate you guys.
Yes, sir.
All right. And I also want to thank the members of council for allowing me to, uh, us to make that adjustment, um, in the, uh, agenda. All right, ordinances. Um, there are no ordinances for first reading. There are no ordinances for first reading. All right, second reading. We have second reading of ordinance number 2024 dash zero eight, which is an ordinance authorizing Williamsburg County to convey title to TMS eleven dash zero two five dash one three two, one ten West Mill Street, King Street, South Carolina, to Vital Aging of Williamsburg County Incorporated as required by the agreement dated April twentieth, 2021, by and between Williamsburg County and Vital Aging of Williamsburg County Incorporated. Is there a motion to approve second reading? All right, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Are we ready for questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please let the record reflect that the motion has been carried, uh, to approve second reading of ordinance number 2024 dash zero eight. We also have second reading tonight of ordinance number 2024 dash zero seven, which is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a quitclaim deed conveying property owned by Williamsburg County in the town of Greeleyville identified by TMS number zero seven dash zero one three dash one three four, containing approximately four tenths acres, more or less located on Main Street in Greeleyville, South Carolina, to the town of Greeleyville, a municipal corporation for the construction of a well to improve water services provided by the town of Greeleyville for the sum of ten dollars. All right, is there a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 2024 dash zero seven?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. We have a motion, and we also have a second. Excuse me. All right, all, are we ready for questions?
Question.
All right, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, please let the record reflect that the motion has been carried, um, to approve second reading of ordinance number 2024 dash zero seven. All right, third reading and adoption of ordinance number 2024 dash zero six, a fiscal year 2024 dash 2025 operating budget for Williamsburg County, in ordinance to provide for the levy of taxes in Williamsburg County for the fiscal year beginning July one, 2024, and ending June thirtieth, 2025, to provide for the appropriation thereof, to provide for revenues, for the payment thereof, to to provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county fi- funds, and to provide for other matters related thereto. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 2024 dash zero six?
Motion for third reading, Mr. Supervisor.
So we have a motion for adoption. Um, do we have a second? We also have a second. Are we ready for questions?
Question.
Are we ready for questions?
Question.
All right. Now, this one, I'm gonna do a little bit different, ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna ask you, because of the significance of it, to please raise your hands, okay? All those in favor of passing ordinance number 2024 dash zero six, please indicate by raising your right hand. Four. Madam Clerk, can you count to make sure this is what the number is?
Four in favor.
We have four in favor? All right. Any opposed?
Three opposed.
We have four affirmative and three negative. The affirmatives, um, the motion has been carried. Please let the record reflect that the, that ordinance number 2024 dash zero six has been passed by a vote of four to three. All right. There is no executive session. Do any of the members of council have anything to report? Do any of the members of council have anything to report? All right, I have one additional thing, and I forgot to mention this earlier. I know that there were a few comments earlier about the roads. Um, the state roads belong to the to the delegation, and and so you'll need to meet with Representative Kirby and Senator Sam. Now, if it's a county-maintained road, then you would contact us, but if it's paved roads, um, most of the time, those paved roads belong to the delegation, and they have a a group appointed to look after that. If you are not sure of whether or not the road is a state-maintained road or a county-maintained road, if you will call our office, we will pull it up on the map, and we will let you know if it's a state-maintained road or a county-maintained road. All right. Thank you all so much. Is there a motion for adjournment? We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
There's a second.
We have a motion to adjourn and a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We, thank you all so much for your time. God bless you. Have a good night.